Heard you guys had a good time in Dallas.
We did. Sure did.
Good game.
Yeah, it was great. It was absolutely great.
That's one of those Robert and Sutton things.
That's right.
You'll remember forever.
That's right.
I did that with my three boys in, I think it was ninety-six. We went up, uh, the, our week between Christmas and New Year's and saw Blackhawks and Bulls. Only time we've seen Michael Jordan. Yeah, that was one thing that was remarkable.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah.
Well, his son was a big Dennis Rodman fan.
Oh.
We, we walked, we walked about twelve blocks to find the shop where he can get green stuff to spray in his hair.
Every year.
Wow.
Dennis Rodman. Anyway, those are, those are the good times.
Do you have a question or anything?
Hello, Kelly.
How are you?
Doing fine.
How are you? See you.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm doing great. Very good.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much.
This is, uh, third year together, Kelly.
Oh, you guys are great.
Well, sure.
You're on a great stand. Oh. Those are great. Huge improvement. We just like wearing the twenty-first.
Yeah, that's right. No, they.
How are you?
Okay, we have a public hearing here at five fifty on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash one resuming to Wayne Rex's property of three ninety-nine Slana Highway. Uh, is there anyone here that would like to, uh, during this public hearing to talk about, uh, the resuming to Wayne Rex's property of three ninety-nine Slana Highway? Christian, do you want to tell us a little bit about it, please?
Yes, sir. So, so Mr. Wayne Rex came in and wanted to have that property resumed to residential. He is, uh, looking to bring his daughter in and build a house there in the, in the near future. I haven't heard any, any complaints. We delivered all the letters, uh, informed everyone that was joining the property and we, we had no, uh, we had no comments in the way.
So that will be resuming to what, Christian?
Um, I'm going to signify a reservation.
Okay. About having questions? Christian? Okay, thank you. Does, uh, anyone, any board members have any questions or anything about the resuming? Have any phone calls that they need to discuss or before we go on this resuming request? Yeah, I'm not, uh, I'm not proceeding. They either contact, uh, me, Christian, or Tommy Lee, more likely, most of the time. And, uh, I've not heard anything from Tommy. Have you, Christian?
Oh, sir.
So, uh, of course, if it is put on the agenda for the second reading. We'll leave it open to for just a few more minutes in case someone was to come in. We put this, uh, advertised on the paper at five fifty, so everyone's had an opportunity, uh, coming in and talk to us if they, as they see necessary. Bless you. You have a little wooden handkerchief now. Certainly have one. Chair. Spain, you have a little wooden handkerchief. Spain Sherry won't let you sit back there.
Oh, she said that her man. Not above, right?
Sure. Are you kidding me? We hope that it changes. David has business, you know.
Business is good.
They get the old white stuff falling in that, uh, ice falling. We'll, we'll get caught up. We. The temperature dropped. It's dropped twenty degrees today. From the time I got here to leave, it probably dropped twenty degrees.
Did nobody report any kind of damage in the city?
We had a tree that was off there.
Apparently, number one hit some parts of town.
That's what the lady said. I never heard.
Well, off there were a few things out of, could, uh, yeah, that do, uh, shredder location. There's a rumor that they're shredding it. No, I guess.
Okay, we will, uh, end the public hearing again. If anyone has come, is there anyone here that would like to talk about the resuming of Wayne Rex's property of three ninety-nine Slana Highway ordinance twenty, twenty-one dash eleven dash one? All right, if none, we will close the, uh, public hearing and we will call for the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the prayer. And remain standing for the pledge allegiance, please. Dear gracious heavens and father, we thank for this day and all the many blessings. Lord, we thank you once again for giving us the opportunity and support, uh, to be here and to represent the, uh, community, Lord. And we pray we do everything in accordance with thy will. Lord, we pray for a country and the lead, and the leaders of our country. We pray that, uh, you'll give them, us, the wisdom and knowledge of what it takes to, uh, continue to run this country in, in the right direction. We pray for the sick, especially the ones that we know. We pray that you restore them back to their much wanted health, Lord, for me, thy will. We pray for the families that have lost loved ones, comfort them as only you know now. Forgive us of our sins, Christ name we pray. Amen. Chief Fett, would you lead us in pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chief. Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Clough.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Dale. Vice Mayor Dotson.
Present.
Alderman Knight.
Here.
Alderman Spat.
Present.
All present, uh, other than Alderman Dale, um, made a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Clough, so second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Coleman, any discussion of the minutes? If not, all four, the motion let it known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion passed. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, I've got, uh, I think three little things that I've been asked about.
All right.
I don't know if it, probably no more to action or anything, but, uh, I'd just like to address the board with it.
Okay. Title them or?
Uh, it doesn't matter. But we did.
What would you like for?
Okay, first and, uh, Black Creek Water Project.
Okay.
Second one, uh, Charlie Ford's got a water problem over on Spring Street. We'd like to address that. And then, uh, number three, the field behind Daily's Market up here. It's, uh, the neighbors just called me, want to know about getting it mowed. That time, so.
Yeah, what was the second one, David?
Charlie Ford's water.
All right.
Problem on Spring Street.
All right. And then, uh, yeah. Okay, so we, uh, we just add that as, uh, ten, eleven, and twelve. Need a motion. David, are you making a motion to add them? Alderman Langford's making a motion to add them. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Alderman John Clough. Any discussion? All for that motion, let it known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign? So that'd be, uh, out of ten, eleven, and twelve. So the agenda is set now, so under public business, item number one, uh, is the second reading on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash one. We had the, uh, first reading. And, uh, had the public hearing. Uh, you heard, uh, Mr. Mansell was here to address, there's not been any, uh, no, no complaints and no one has, has wanted to address, uh, uh, this issue on the resuming issue, so. I look, I entertain the motion to accept this.
Moved, we accepted it, sir.
Motion, motion made by Alderman John Clough, second by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, any discussion? All for the motion, let it known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion passed. Item number one, under, uh, new business is a chamber report by, uh, Mr. Gene Gant. On that, Gene.
We stand in tonight for Shannon who's out. Um, wanted to update you on something that, um, that y'all learned on back on November first. And that was the funding for the retail, um, recruiter. And you'd asked if we'd like to this county and get them to, uh, talk about funding half of it. That did occur on November fourth. A group of us went to the budget committee meeting and presented, described everything that's going on, explained it to them. They took no action that night, but asked us to go to the county commission meeting, to the full commission, and present there, which did happen again. Um, that was on, uh, November the eighth. And then, uh, they sent it back to the budget committee. So, on the third trip, on November eighteenth, the budget committee voted unanimously not to participate, not to fund that. So we're here for the evening night to see if we can go forward with the additional fifteen thousand since the county's not wanting to. And answer any questions you might have, which is no, no, and no, is all we've got so far.
So I, I was with, uh, the committee when we, uh, addressed the, uh, guy commission on two separate occasions. I responded every third occasion. Uh, and, um, uh, I can't really explain exactly if they wanted it before, if they didn't vote for it. And, um, so in the event that this was passed tonight in the city council, uh, pays thirty thousand dollars, uh, for a retail retention and retail consultant, uh, then this would work just for corporate women's and women's. So it will be strictly for the city and for city businesses. So I, I think that's, uh, and this was the thirty thousand dollars that was going to take, uh, uh, that we got, uh, from the state of Tennessee one time random. Fifty thousand, fifty-eight, fifty, I think it was fifty-eight thousand. So, uh, this is not anything that is coming out of the general fund. This is a one-time grant that you can do.
Is this money that, is this money we're getting, is it, uh, specified specifically for this project here or can we use it for other things?
Well, there's a, there's a few things you can use it for, David, but you, I mean, like paving streets and building sidewalks.
Right.
Given the public safety, that's not one.
Okay, Mr. Gant, what do you think this guy can do that we haven't already arrived?
Well, from the information that I saw that he delivered to us when he did his presentation, he had a tremendous amount of data that we didn't have. That he had traffic flows, he had where our customers were coming from. He could track all that. He had real estate picked out that places could go to. We just don't have enough manpower to do that ourselves, is what I see. Uh, they, that's what they do, and it gives us a sense here to take.
Has anybody researched this company or firm or whatever to see what kind of, uh, feedback and how well he's done to the voices?
Yes, we did extensively, and, um, there were two companies that presented, and we researched both of them with their references of different cities around that we're using them, and that they were all excellent. Somebody had any issues, and they've been very successful for them. If I'm not mistaken, is it Putnam County that uses the same?
They, they use a consultant, I'm not for sure, Gene, if that's who they use, but they did use.
I'm saying it's the same.
And recommended it highly thus.
Right, and we just don't, we, we don't have manpower to go to these conferences and places like that where these retail companies are set and not going to look for places to go. That's part of the problem. So this, this company would do that on our behalf.
Yes, we do, sir.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Gant or for you, mayor. But my understanding after a lengthy discussion in our last forming, this is part of that TVA, isn't this part of that TVA Academy program, the TVA Innovation Academy? That we, um, this, this is all kind of all up in that program, is it?
Yes, they do.
Okay. All right, so I think Shannon Cantrell spoke about this at length at the last meeting, and it appears from the minutes that, um, we passed it in dammer, so five to nothing. You know, because of the closest battle twice meeting, um, to move forward with this. Yeah, if the county would, uh, match fifty-fifty. So now the decision is, do we still have this unified support for the program even though the county's not going to match it to fifty? And in my opinion, although I'm disappointed that the county's, doesn't see the vision or the need, um, you know, but that's their, that's their prerogative decision. I feel like the program still has a lot of merit, and I would like to see us fund this through this TVA Innovation Academy grant. And, um, like you said, here market specifically to within the municipal bounds, city limits. So I made a motion that we move forward in that direction.
Motion made by Alderman Kelly Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Any discussion?
Yes, Gene, was there any kind of a return on investment estimation or?
Not for the first year, no. The first year is going to be more, more, less research and then, you know, finding out what, what marketability we have, and then who would be interested in our market. Uh, but there's no return on investment guarantees, no. And it is a year-to-year contract, whereas the other one was, I think, a three-year or a four-year contract upfront, um, committal for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
So Putnam County strongly recommended this.
Yeah, so, so you.
So they must have had some ROI.
They had the answers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as Brother Ed knew, as you said, this is not money that's coming out of our, our funds if the state officially lands.
That's right. That's right, so we got a motion and seconds, any more discussion?
First year is thirty thousand and each additional year is twenty-five, so.
That's what I remember, yes, I think that's great.
And, and, uh, Ms. Cantrell will be given a quarterly report, uh, to the board of Alderman, uh.
And it's year to year, not?
That's right. This is a one-year deal.
Thank you.
One-year, one-year deal. Okay, got a motion and second, any more discussion? Roll call, vote to Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Spat. Alderman Clough.
Yes.
Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
The motion passed, uh, thank you, Mr. Gant.
Thanks, Al, appreciate your input and our help.
Item number two is natural gas update, uh, Mr. Alan Linderfeld, Symmetry Energy. Going to give us a Cliff Notes version.
Is that being three minutes or less? Thank you, mayor. I appreciate the time that you give me to kind of give you an update. Got some good news for you. Uh, after all the horror stories we saw on the news and all that the past few months, uh, you know, this time last year, natural gas was manageable, good pricing, and we had a pretty decent winter. Since July, we saw gas pricing escalate every month, up until November was six dollars a twenty cents, where we normally pay in under three dollars for the raw cost of gas. Since we got a warm weather report the last few weeks, it's, it's plummeted, and one of the statements was January contract lost a dollar thirty-five on the week, if this is last week. One of the largest one-week net declines since August twenty-four, two thousand and seven. So the times I've been here, it's always been weather dependent, weather dependent. So the forecast has actually pulled a lot of dollars out of the market, which is a good thing. Keep in mind, this we got January and February ago, so we'd come get a couple at some point. So, but the good thing is, pricing wise, uh, mayor, uh, congratulations to you, you foresaw a long-term core support, uh, that you guys fixed pricing gas prices, uh, several months ago. And, let's see if I can get this in my purse here. Back in, you, you actually fixed pricing gas.
Alan, can you hit your button? You know, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm used to that. But, uh, back in November of nineteen, you fixed some gas prices that is strong today. It's a, it's roughly seventy-five percent of what you burn on a normal month. Uh, it's a, a three oh two average. So those are gas prices I just talked about, the, the, as high as six twenty in November. You bought a little bit of that, but your fixed price covered most of your usage. So you guys are in really good shape. And, and that fixed price position is all the way through March of twenty twenty-three. So, uh, I would, I would recommend, just to read you some numbers right now, this is a snapshot from today. Calendar twenty twenty-two was trading around three ninety-eight. Calendar twenty twenty-three was trading three fifty-one. Calendar twenty twenty-four is three twenty-two. Calendar twenty twenty-five is three eleven. So that's not very far from some of the fixed prices you have. So it's not demagoguing, it's, you're in a good position to get through this winter. I just recommend looking out in the future and seeing, as, as you look out, reading those numbers, you can see as you go out, uh, there's a declining average. So, and it's been that way for, for several months, and typically, you know, four or five years ago and, and back, uh, it was, it was always higher. So it's, but now it's always, it's been declining. One of the things, there's good pressure on the market. Uh, you guys have probably heard LNG, uh, liquid natural gas is trading thirty to thirty-five dollars a decathirm in Europe and Japan and Asia. Unfortunately, we're in a global market now that we export over twelve BCFs a day to those markets. We send over six BCFs a day to Mexico, so that demand, that gas leaving, you know, it's a domestic source that's leaving our shores, and, uh, we're competing with that money that people will not pay for. So, uh, you know, EIA's forecast. So, uh, you know, EIA's forecasting that LNG is going to be, uh, the, the United States is going to be the top exporter of LNG by twenty twenty-four, so that just means it's going to grow. Uh, and we're going to compete for those molecules of gas, so it's, it's something to try to plan for, look forward, uh, I wish, I wish we had that crystal ball and predict the cost of gas, but we can't. So it's, it's more or less managed the best way we can, and when you see gas prices out in the future that, that works with, with your town, your city, uh, and, and keep the rate stable. I'd recommend you try to look at that and keep looking forward. Uh, just the last thing I have, uh, short-term weather, it's warm outside, maybe sixty-something degrees today, uh, but January and February, the weather forecasters are calling for more than normal months. I think they're, uh, trying to stay neutral at this point because they know they can't predict it, so rest assured, we'll probably see some cold weather, just have to hang it still. That's, that's about all I have, if you have any questions, I know with the gas prices, uh, the way they've been in the news, I hopefully may have some questions, so let's keep track of the show.
Thank you, thank you, no, no questions, just we got plenty of natural gas to sell, correct?
Well, let's hope so, let's hope, you know, if, if you have an average January, February, you're gonna, you're gonna make a budget, and, you know, you shouldn't see any escalated gas prices. If it turns extremely cold, we're gonna have to buy some gas on, you know, we're gonna have to buy some gas out there on whatever the first month is, but right now, all story, when you've got, uh, your gas fixed price to seventy-five percent of the three oh two raw cost of gas average. Oh, one thing I meant to mention, we was talking about in Manayel, is even better news, you're gonna get money back, uh, the East Tennessee Natural Gas Rate Case that I came and talked to you about last year. We, it just hit the email today, I guess, uh, on the preliminary, uh, top line invoice, and, uh, they're going to be refunding a portion of that to you directly on wire transfer. A portion is coming through the invoice, so we'll be funneling that refund back to the invoice to you, so, but we're estimating that it's going to be somewhere around thirty-five thousand dollars. That money was overcollected at a dollar four January through July of this year, and most people are trying to refund that back to their customers January through July because that's the money when you paid for it last year. So however you, however you choose to do that is entirely up to you.
Yeah, who, Tennessee Revenue Authority, are they the ones that copied that, or who?
No, no, this was the.
Sales report you're.
Well, no, it was East Tennessee filed a rate case to raise the rates, and the way that mechanism works, when they file it with FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Authority, uh, the commission. They can go ahead and assess the rate at that filing, so it went into effect in January, it finally got settled this summer, and the effective new rate went from, from a dollar four to seventy-nine cents. So that difference was refunded for those seven months based on your usage.
Thank you, any, uh, questions for Alan? Okay, Alan, thank you so much, you're welcome, and have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Alright, item, uh, item number four, uh, is a update, uh, or, did I skip one, item number three, item number three, my apologies. Item number three is a flood mitigation update, uh, we have with us, uh, via Zoom, uh, Ms. Marcy Ackerman from Department of Criminal Development District, and Ms. Donna Holden, uh, Tennessee Emergency Management Association. Uh, Donna, I'll turn it over to you.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Everybody's good?
Good. Look, are any particular concerns that you need addressed as of now, Marcy and I are working on, Marcy is working on completing the benefit cost analysis. Unfortunately, the fact is, none of the properties are located in a special flood hazard area, we will have to do a BCA, but what we can do is one for each property. And then aggregate it together to get the, um, VCR, and that's the benefit cost ratio, and once we turn this information in, hopefully we will be able to get this through, probably by September.
Go ahead, Alma Coleman.
I, I have a quick question, this is Alderman Coleman, about the benefit cost ratio.
Yes.
You know, this occurred in two thousand and nineteen, and we've been going back and forth on this for now almost two years.
Mm-hmm.
Did we just now discover that we needed to do a VCR report on each individual property?
Yes, what, what happens is, when you send in the applications, they go through an EHP review panel and a technical review panel. This came back on the technical side, we answered, we satisfied the EHP, and that is back in their warehouse, and they're still doing their reviews. And you guys weren't the only ones, had another one come back with the same reason, just because they're not in a special flood hazard area. Had they been located in a special flood hazard area, then we wouldn't need to do a DCA.
Okay, thank you very much, um, I hope that our media that is represented here will pick that up and report that, because I know there's a lot of property owners that are affected by this, and I think what she just described there is a really good explanation, because I read their shoes. And after two years, I'm now learning that, oh, well, we've got to do this benefit cost ratio study, because, you know, it fell the technical report, I think I want an explanation for that, so I hope y'all will.
Well, and it is an easy, the good thing is, it is an easy process, it is not under their old model, it is, uh, it's all done in Excel. Um, some of the, some of the answers are actually pre-populated, so it's just a matter of entering each damage history for each property, and then once we get them all together, then we get the score. We need to score a one or better.
Okay, thank you, but has that held up our, um, first, has that held up the program at all?
No, it's just the review process, there is, that was one of the things I tried to stress, unfortunately, it is not a fast program, and right now, they are reviewing probably five different disasters for us. And that EHP, uh, the EHP team is not just reviewing Tennessee's, they're reviewing Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, Kentucky, so if they get projects in.
Okay.
It's, they're in line.
Thank you, so it, it didn't hold us up, and, and it's not uncommon, then when it goes to the FEMA review, that there could be technical issues that arise, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Holden, I appreciate it, Ms. Ackerman, do you have anything to add or take away?
I'm about seventy percent of the way through getting the information entered in Excel, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have that completed.
Okay, well, thank you all very, very much, board members, we have any, uh, questions for Ms. Holden or Ms. Ackerman? Yes, Alderman Coleman.
What kind of information do you have to put into an Excel spreadsheet, what, what kind of information does that require, I'm just curious?
Okay, what this is, is FEMA got them on Microsoft, and they developed a new way of doing benefit cost analysis, so you have to enter your damage history, how many times was it damaged within last three years? And you enter those amounts, what it caused, what type of damage it was, um, was it riverine, flash flooded, that type of data. And some of it, just because when you select something in particular, it can pre-populate, you can do it based on study information, or what they call professional information, or historic information, and then if you don't have to do one because it is a special flood hazard area, it's alternative basis.
Okay, so.
Marcy, have anything to add to that, or miss anything on?
Um, just some property information too, like square footage, the acreage, um, just some kind of generic basic stuff.
I, I guess where I'm going with this is, have you, has this required that you contact, make contact with any of these affected property owners to get additional information?
I haven't contacted any of them, no, sir.
You haven't needed, you haven't needed to.
No, I didn't, no, sir.
Okay, and did you say that, um, at best case, you're thinking maybe this could get approved by February, and if it's approved hypothetically in February, then how long will it be before our residents could expect the negotiation process to begin in terms of settlements?
So the day that we receive the approval notice from FEMA, we will try to turn around an approval notification to the city or to the town, and from that date forward, you can get started. The only thing that we cannot do is, we won't be able to reimburse, we are a contract state, so until that contract is executed and in place, and a purchase order is issued on our side. Then you, you literally can complete the entire project if you want to, I, I just had a project, literally, it took the, just the timeframe to get the contract executed, they completed all the work. And it was just, it was a, it was a generative project, but still, the timeline, the hardship for us right now is coming through COVID. Our contract division is very much overloaded right now, they brought in some more people, but all ninety-five counties were declared a disaster area because of COVID. So that is ninety-five different contracts, and if you have individual cities within there that were declared as well, that's an additional contract, they don't just do our contracts. They do public assistance of anything that was declared a disaster area, such as, um, the incident that occurred in West Tennessee with, um, was it, uh, Houston County and all of that. That will kind of cause some delays there, they tried to divvy up the team so that we don't fall behind, but yes, so that process can take a little bit, but you can do your work. Your work is not based on our contract, the only thing is, we just can't reimburse you, FEMA's letter, FEMA regulations, from the date of approval, you can get started.
Thank you very much, I appreciate all your help, answer my questions.
Ms. Holden, so we need to cross our fingers and hope that we don't have a disaster in Tennessee, uh, in these winter months coming.
Anywhere else in the world, and that everybody in DC is playing nice, not trying to be some big shot, and the government doesn't shut down, because if that happens, nothing is done. All of the essential workers of the management will be in the office, but everything will be sitting there waiting for the worker bees to get back.
The folks that do the head elected have been waiting on this, yeah, I got it, you, you don't have to say it, I got it, no. Any, any more questions for Ms. Holden or Ms. Ackerman? Thank you all so much, and if we don't see you before Christmas, have a Merry Christmas, okay?
Yes, but Marcy, you need me just calling.
I'll do it, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
And safe in our holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Yes, my brother, uh, okay, item number four, uh, we're going to table that for now, this is crosswalks that, uh, we have talked to Mr. McGill about, wanting to install, uh, they're more than just crosswalks. What he is looking at installing, uh, is exactly what we have got over on Zachary Street, uh, when we got the grant, the Safe Routes, the school grant, that would have the flashers. Uh, and also would have what I'm calling a safety hump, speed hump, uh, where when patients or employees want to, uh, go across the street, there would be two locations. There would be one, um, on First Street, intersection of First, close to the intersection of First and Oak, uh, there would also one be one directly in front of the hospital, uh, on Oak Street. Uh, Mr. McGill is, uh, willing to share the cost, uh, with the city of Livingston, I've got a barge looking into this, uh, because, uh, I mean, you, you can't just go put a speed hump, it's gotta be the, uh, right, measurement and sizes. I, I asked the same question, but, uh.
They don't have that?
No, they, currently what they have now is just crosswalks, and which is, they're just painted, and with a few little speed bumps, but, uh, with a study, uh, that Livingston Police Department done, uh, the, the, uh, the first request was because of speakers, so the police department, uh, went over and put their electronic speed detector, uh, down, and the average speed, I think, was thirty-five miles per hour on Oak Street, uh, the, the hospital wanted to move forward, uh, with this, calling it a safety measure. So we have got, uh, if you're unfamiliar with what they are looking for, you can go to Zachary Street and see, uh, over there, the solar panels, uh, that, uh, there's no electricity, run is running out of solar. Uh, there's a push button with flashing lights on demand, uh, in that case, is where students can cross over and go play in the soccer field. This would be a case where patients, employees, and guests can cross over Main Street and those flashing lights come on, so this is going to be tabled until we get a full price of, uh, exactly what the cost would be.
Are you saying a safety hump?
That, that's what I'm calling it, it, it is, uh, if you're familiar with Zachary Street.
Yes, I know Zachary Street, I don't.
So, uh.
I got, I got a question, Dr. Booth, if somebody's coming in with a neck or a back injury, thirty-three crash, what, what that hump going to do?
Where, where they're talking about doing it, where they're talking about doing it at the hospital, probably would, would not make a difference in four or five seconds, it would be insignificant.
Okay, the jar or anything, it wouldn't.
I mean, to slow down to safely navigate that speed bump would not make a significant difference in their time to be here. I have a question, or, or you, you have any more question?
No.
Okay, um, what is the current, what is the current speed limit right there?
It's twenty-five.
Okay, so what is our speed limit in a school zone?
It's twenty-five when you're going to go in with flashing lights.
Okay, that was lower than that, well, yeah, I hope it's twenty. Is there, would a short-term, uh, benefit be to consider lowering that speed limit right in there to, you know, fifteen?
It's a, it's one block.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's one block, right, is that right, what they're talking about?
I think we're talking about from, when you turn off from, uh, West Broad to First Street, I mean, that's the hospital, what we call the hospital.
If there's any questions, ready to move in from Coleman's side?
Yes, sir.
Cool, here, Chief.
I think where, where we were monitoring it was from First Street, you know, uh, on Oak all the way up to about, Dr. Carson's office, this is about where we were capturing our data from, just that section.
Uh, so it, so the speed limit, we think, is thirty-five?
No, I think it, I think it's twenty-five off the top of my head, you know, it's, it's relatively slow, and when we saw the, the traffic patterns, we saw some, you know, it gave you the times and days, and it gives a lot of information, but we saw some that were sixty, and, uh, we anticipated those, those were either police cars or ambulances.
Okay.
And that's most likely.
So, so, I mean, I know the hospital's been there for, I mean, years, and, and it's been the same situation.
I, I was on it late in seventy-four.
My question, I guess my question is, my question is, um, is the speeding of the vehicles the main reason that the hospital's requesting it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, are you talking about on First Street or on Oak Street?
On Oak, in between Medical Drive and, and, or.
And First Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you, you see where.
There's four crosswalks, but there's, there's still a speed hump down, um, towards DeVita, down towards the old QRS medical building, I think, that's still there.
Yeah, there, there, there is.
At least one, but it's, it's kind of a.
What, what, what is that?
Ineffective speed hump.
I think we've tried to head the hospital out and pass, but we have made some little rumble steps, just basically what it is. But that that's that's not official, and and if official McGill wants to do what we have talked about him, that I need to get an engineer uh and make sure it's done properly and correct. Because, as we all know, Oak Street is used a lot, not for just hospital purposes, but in cut-through streets and things of that nature. So that's why uh that we're tabling this. Mr. McGill is with the understanding that we're tabling this, and he is willing to share costs with the city. Uh you can see his letter that he has drafted to the board. Uh but it would be, it would be offering a city street, and the only folks can do that is is. So that will be tabled uh and be brought back up at a later date, more than likely February. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh item number, item number five is a letter we got uh from Mr. Craig Story and the Overton County Election Commission. Uh we must go ahead and turn the election over, the city election, over to them, which is in June of twenty-twenty-two. This is nothing out of the norm, this is something we we don't need to.
You really need action.
Yes, we do need action, and to go ahead and.
Turn it over?
Yes.
Motion to turn it over?
Motion to turn it over to the Overton County, the city election, to the Overton County Election Commission.
Second?
Uh second by John Clough. In this, the election office needs to follow information from them, adding a letter of copy, your city's resolution to hold the city election, the newspaper or newspapers in which the publisher acquired legal election notices, the office to be elected, qualification for each office. If any unexpired term will be elected on this election cycle, your recognition of the town of Livingston responsible for paying or the costs that we associated with said election. So those are the things that will be be doing, so basically, uh this will be offered, rather than us to sign a resolution to turn over to uh the election office. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll fore the motion, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, so a motion passed. Item number six is Fire Department Chief Rocky Dow. Quarterly report?
Oh. Lost me there. Uh we turned our quarterly report in for September, October, November. We had eighteen fires for the three-month period, responded to a hundred and seventy-nine medical calls, uh had one re- report for an investigation, thirteen automobile accidents, one gas leak, three calls reported on traffic light, and nineteen other calls. For a total of two hundred and thirty-four calls. Now, that does include our burn, hermit, or walk-ins and stuff like that. That's stuff that we accidentally worked and sent to the state of Tennessee.
Any questions from the chief? No questions, good job, Chief. Item number seven, uh Police Department Chief Greg Etheridge.
Of course, we all got the the packet that we sent out. In terms of uh street charges, arrest warrants, we had a hundred and one during August to November. I backed it up a month, so you can go through for a month uh timeframe. Uh we issued a total of a hundred and sixty-one tickets or citations. We've had four major accidents, fifty-one what we consider minor with uh no reported injuries on the first round, and sometimes that can escalate, but in terms of the calls from there. When we say CAD calls, just remember that some of that can be self-initiated, and some of that is somebody calling for assistance during that timeframe, frames, uh three thousand six hundred and fifty-four. Some of those calls can take a matter of minutes, and some can take several hours. But I gave you a generic breakdown of some of the higher-end kind of uh calls on there for that. Uh you wish me to go through all of the types of offenses?
No, no, that's it. Any questions uh for the chief? We've had an opportunity to look at the uh report. If there's something in particular there you've got a question with the chief, please, if you'd like to answer a question.
Thank you for the, thank, yes, sir, I appreciate it, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Item, item number eight is premium pay uh for city employees, and just wanted to talk about that in just a minute. If you're aware, uh American Recovery, or American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, uh is what uh everyone is is stands for, American Rescue Plan Act. And we have got one million eighty-three thousand dollars uh that we have got that has came to us to be used uh in broadband, water, wastewater, and surface water, if if there's some problems. Also in there, that is, there is what they call premium pay. Premium pay is simply any city employee that has had face-to-face contact with the general public uh during uh the pandemic. Uh after talked into with all of our employees, the police department, supervisors, we qualify uh this one time to give a premium pay to those employees all the way from uh police and fire, to airports, to parks, uh public safety, I didn't say police, fire, but water treatment, uh wastewater treatment, every and office workers, every employee would get this premium pay of seven hundred dollars. Now, obviously, the taxes took out of that, so at the end of the day, uh employees will be getting about five hundred and fifty dollars. That would take us down to a million twenty-seven thousand dollars is is what it would cost. So it would cost fifty-six thousand dollars of the million eighty-three. So uh we we are, we have received uh some of the money. And uh there should be another uh installment sometime in the next ten to twelve months. Uh and for us to start uh looking at exactly what we want to do now. Uh it is my understanding, and this is as clear as mud, uh but after talking with Jason Monkpower today, uh it is our understandings that there is another pot of money, ARPA, that will be coming from Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation. And there is a question or not on whether it will go to Overton County. And Overton County uh should be receiving about four point seven million dollars. Now, that four point seven million dollars, that will be for uh use of water and wastewater, I know for sure. Uh it may follow the other uh criteria of broadband and uh surface water infrastructure, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. So the final ruling, however, will come out uh right before the first of the year to see how uh they, see how that money can come in with the million eighty-three or the million twenty-seven if you approve this uh premium pay, uh on how it will extend. Keep in mind, it is my understanding we have four utility districts in Overton County. So four utility districts that have water. We are the only ones that have wastewater and water. Uh we have over five thousand water customers, not for sure what other utility districts have. So uh Greg Davenport and myself will be talking to uh county executive, uh Mr. Danner, uh and 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 talk to him about some programs uh that we have that are possibly shovel-ready in the event that the city council approves the projects that we uh that we have ready to go. And what we have ready to go is a reminder, is the automated meter reading service. It is some check valves that will be coming in, given the fact that we have a large water loss. And to help with meter readers, there were some valves on that, kind of talk about leaks as well. So those are, those are just some of the things. Again, all of that will come back to this for 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 more discussion, and if we want to go forward with it. So that's just a little update on ARPA. Uh when TJ and the state of Tennessee give the final ruling on exactly how the other pot of money is going to be divided up, I'll certainly will let you know. So I've talked to Anthony Hanes today, Tennessee Municipal League, and uh we may have a uh call-in with him next month or in February, whenever this this comes out. So, I know that was lengthy, but today, I'm asking for city employees to get premium pay at seven hundred dollars per employee times eighty, that give it fifty-six thousand dollars that will take it to a billion twenty-seven thousand. Uh and this is not uncharacteristic. If you look across the upper quadrant, there's been other cities and counties that have gave have have gave, uh I don't wanna call it a bonus, but premium pay. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Is the seven hundred what we're eligible for per employee, or is that just the number that we derive?
That's the number that I came up with, it didn't get taken away from the projects that we have. And 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 at the end of the day, by the city, we have a pocket of about five hundred and fifty dollars. So if that's what we want to do, I just need a motion to approve that premium pay of seven hundred dollars per employee.
So moving.
Motion made by Alderman, Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, is our second. Second by Alderman Chris Beck. Any discussion?
This is to every employee, correct?
Every employee. Any more questions or discussions? Roll call, Hopeless Fellas.
Alderman Helen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Alderman Langford?
Yes.
Alderman Spade?
Here.
Alderman Flatt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Item number nine is just for re- reference, uh just for reference, on this where we refinanced our uh bonds that we had coming up, so we'll go to item number ten. Uh Alderman Langford requested Flat Creek Water Project.
Okay, uh the Bay of Black Creek down here, the strip, this was between Upper Hill and Road and Highway eighty-five, they've been requesting water for some time, and it's my understanding that the water goes, the lines go pretty close to them. And uh anyway, uh I think we had promised them that we was gonna send it to them. And uh anyway, to make a long story short, I was told that they would have it by fall, and I was approached this week by a group of folks down there, and they said, hey, it's Christmas. Where's my water? So I just told them I come to the board to get update.
Yeah, I'll be happy to give you an update on that. At no time did I or this board promise them water at all. In fact, I've met with several of them, uh and we have met with our engineer, Greg Davenport.
So we're not gonna do water?
I I I think they had to buy in to to get it engineered back to their place, and they did not want to do that. That's that was, that was.
So we we just need to tell them the water project's on.
Yeah, no, the water project's on, if they wanna get the water from the road and cross that creek and get to them. I I spoke to them, David, a year ago. I've met with four or five of the residents down in Flat Creek who was doing that. Greg Davenport was here as well.
Well, they just come to me, and they've done the assumption that it's gonna happen by fall, and uh it's Christmas, I'm worried.
Yeah, well, that wasn't promised by me. Now, if any of the board members promised it, then that's amendment on me.
Okay, I'll just tell them that, uh I told them I bring it from the board, I brought it from the board, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, do we?
I have a question, I think.
Yes, sir.
What makes that, what makes getting water to those folks um complicated, I guess? What what is, what are the complications?
It it has been about a year since we visited that. Uh I I honestly, I would have to pull a report out by Greg Davenport, and I can certainly get a report about him writing uh by Greg. I I know that uh we, you know, our our goal was to get more water to hit with uh to try to supply the demand, we was not keeping up the demand down there. Uh we've had water down at Hillland Road for a very, very long time, and we've had water at Hillland for for a very long time. Now, uh there's some creek crossings, I think, uh that would be an added expense for the city of Livingston. Uh now, if that's something that we want to entertain again, we can certainly entertain it, I'm not, I'm not opposed to. But when I talked to them, uh it was clear what we stood and what was there.
Yeah, I I'm not interested in debating that part of this discussion. My question really is, how many residents do we have the potential to service? I mean, how many, how many residents are we talking about here? That don't have water, that are coming wanting water? I mean, is that we don't four or five, or is it?
I don't think there's very many, probably under ten, I guess.
Yeah, I I met with approximately four or five of them. Now, now, I will say that things have changed. So now, with this money coming in, uh this may be a good time, David, to take another look at it again, because that's what it was all about, it was finance. So, and that's what this.
So the complicated part was the creek crossings and the expense?
I I I think so.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's, it's been a year, sir.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
So, before, David, before you tell them no, let me talk.
Well, I'm not going to, I hope the newspaper will read it.
Let me, uh me and Greg Davenport now will be talking about that.
That's the way, I don't have to tell them anything.
Sure.
Because, I mean, uh I meet these people, and they say, hey, you told me this, you know, where's your word? So, okay, I done my deal, I'll drop it to the board.
All right, we'll look into it. Item number uh eleven, uh David, I think you wanted Charlie Ford.
Charlie Ford, he's a resident over here on Spring Street, he's got a problem with water. Water comes down the hillside, uh I will say this, he kind of lives in a lowland, road is approximately two feet up above his property line. But anyway, he understands that water goes downhill, and he's gonna catch every bit of it. But uh what, he was, I don't know if he might say wanting or whatever, he he suggested that the road tiles is too small across some spring stretch, which we just put a brand-new road through there. I understand that. I went over there today, looked at it myself, there's water draining out of both road tiles. You can see where the water been coming down to the road tiles, but he's suggesting the road tiles are too small, which we have a brand-new road through there, uh we don't have a boring machine to bore it up, so.
I think we have a small, but we don't have the people.
Okay, so at least uh I can check into that.
Yeah, we we checked into that about three months ago. Uh and I talked to Mr. Ford on that. Sent Bruce Dixon and Wayne Pete Went over there to uh to look at that, and I again, this has been three or four months ago, but it it was my understanding we had done all we could do.
I didn't know, I talked to him Sunday, and he's still dissatisfied. Okay, natural fail up here behind Davis Market. When uh Davis Market come in here, people along Rasher Street had to settle property in order for them to be in there. Okay, when they did, the city, which I wasn't on the board at that time, they went up through there, talking to the residents up through there, they said that they'd make sure that it was kept mowed the whole nine yards. I explained to them that we don't mow it, we don't do that. But but there again, it wasn't mowed the whole time twice sun, which I know it's winter. Couple months, three, mowing time again. So anyway, they said that Dave went to, they'd gone to Davis Market to maybe find a manager or something, somebody that they could talk to, or maybe get this to going. So I told them I'd bring it to the board, maybe we could get a building inspector to go. So I told them I'd bring it to the board, maybe we could get a building inspector to go up there, find out who to talk to, or maybe you, maybe you find out who to talk to. I've even had a private mower go up there and he said, "I can't even make the contact." He said, "I'm willing to do it, I can't make the contact." These people was complaining that it's growed up behind their houses, weeds, mosquitoes, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, so we, we have, we have addressed these, uh, complaints, uh, and, uh, in fact, in my supervisor's meeting today, it was addressed. And, uh, I think simply, uh, it kind of fell by the, uh, this, fell off the radar this past summer, just that summer. Uh, and what he's telling me about, there is a empty field in half twice Davey's. Uh, and, uh, it's not, it's not visible, but I'm not saying if it wasn't in violation of some of the property maintenance, because it probably was.
There was even one or two property owners telling me, which I don't know this to be true and probably not, said, "City owned daddy up there."
Yeah, and we addressed that today as well, it's simply not true.
No, no.
Absolutely not. There is no amount, and if someone can produce the amount that the city of Livingston has, we'll certainly take care of it. But as far as the overrun lot, uh, that, uh, that is what he took care of and that is...
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so who is that land being due to?
Land's...
Yeah, the land's...
All right, so if you look on the tax map...
That's right.
And we know who pays the property taxes. Did that individual, corporation, whoever, I'd say, also receive a registered letter just like I did? Many people did, saying that their responsibilities, you know, they're law, they're liable. Did that go up to them?
No, they did not.
Should it?
Yes.
Okay.
And it will.
Okay, okay.
It just, it just...
Right, and it's their responsibility to pay for it?
It just, that's exactly right. That's the way the property maintenance works. We send them the letter, uh, they have an opportunity to clean it up in three days. If they don't clean it up, then the city will, uh, go and clean it up, sign it.
Okay, so we just, we overlooked that property on that, in that process.
And nobody complained and it's not visible from the road.
Gotcha.
And we dismissed it.
Thank you.
And I told the resident that to call. The, uh, next board of Alderman meeting will be Monday, January the sixth, Thursday, January the sixth, Thursday, January the sixth, at six o'clock, uh, twenty-twenty-two, yes. So that, uh, so please, uh, address your calendar, uh, as necessary. Okay, no other business really?
I have one quick question.
Yes.
In the minutes of the last meeting, I asked about another song that's around, I think, you put it on the agenda, did I ask about it?
Yeah, sure.
Um, the railing at the front of the VFW building, we talked about possibly getting that one renovated to match the side, the outside. Did we keep working on that?
We, we sure can.
Ask this...
Yeah, absolutely, I sure will, absolutely. All right, no other business with the city. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, second. By Kelly, Alderman Kelly calling on for the motion, letting know, saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, life's time, motion. We're adjourned. Kelly, I got you a chair.